Are we starting off with the?
Do you have the map showing a lot of 23?
Is that in the third document?
It's a third.
So I had a question, Tom. Or Tommy. Is seven one point one in this that you're presenting now? Two different topics or the same topic?
This what?
Well, we have. On seven point one. That's request for replat.
Yeah.
It is the same. Okay.
Yeah, so there was two other applications that I put in. For just a couple of. So.
We'll try to get back.
With the new flat on that, so originally that was that was plotted for two, four units, a twin and a sixplex. And so what we're doing is vacating the all of the common ground around the buildings. Which was all storming drainage easement. And then you can see on the northwest corner, there's there's already two manholes and in the back of the lot between the railroad tracks where the house will go. And that will actually have a regular storm easement and then on the where it says block four on the southeast corner there. Some of that drainage easement runs onto Anthony Samuel's line. And so that would be a designated drainage easement instead of all of the common ground. And so when I when I bought this from the county, part of the reason for this is when I bought this from the county. All of the land around the current six units that are there. I own everything around that, so I own where their driveways are and everything, so like getting rid of all the drainage easement, I will be can. All of the land around just six unit buildings so he has a correct. Legal description. And then. And we'll do that when we file the plan, so I've already got it set up in town. Essentially what we're doing like we would do with any. With any platted individual lot. We have a designated storm easement now in the back of the lot where the storms were currently is instead of just the overlay of everything.
Your request is to remove it.
Yes.
Dan did one of mine, so thank you. I also would like to add. Public Works request for council action, also that eight point one then. Point two, however that works.
Well, yeah, let's just go.
So I do a copy of it, it's a request for council action for public works. My next one would be that. But twelve, closed session is not necessary, however, I would like to. That it will open for a couple discussions and maybe some council direction.
So proceed, but just to keep the meeting open at that point in time. I mean, is there anything that we, since it's been noticed as a closed session, is there anything that we should be talking about in a closed session?
No, not longer.
Alright. So, somebody, any other corrections or additions? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda for those corrections? Motion by Dan, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Gina. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Alright, next we'll move on to public forum. This is an opportunity for citizens to present items to the council that are not on the agenda. Each presentation is limited to three minutes and a maximum of fifteen minutes will be satisfied. If your item needs follow-up from the city staff will arrange for that. If you'd like to step forward for public forum, please make your way to the podium, state your name and address, and council will hear your concerns.
My name is Anthony Sandau. I'm the landlord up at the Bon Meadows, I'm not a resident. You need an address? Just for. Fifteen twenty-four Bon Meadows Drive, something like that. You guys are proceeding with this water, twelve inch water main across the lots there, and I wasn't notified of any of that. I don't know if you. Really have these ones. I was in here in May, we discussed all of this, right? I never got any communications back after that. I don't know what happened with North Shore Developments. Haven't heard anything back from them. It just seems like you're just gonna ram this through. Wouldn't it make some sense to put some sewer in as this water goes in?
I think this might be conversation that.
We need to take up.
What I can say.
Close meeting?
Is that.
I need some guarantees. I haven't been given a thing and this whole thing might be bonded to a couple million.
So what I can say is that the project that we're proceeding with now is not.
I understand.
Service main, it is a loop to the whole northern area of the city.
I just think things need to slow down a little bit. I know you did a feasibility study, which I wasn't a wish I would have been part of. I know you need the senior housing and I think this all needs to be taken into consideration. That's why I put all the. Stuff on the types of waste and lean manufacturing. I'm not opposed to anything. I'm open to negotiations. I just want to see this slowed down. Stop at the moment.
I would like to be sure that our administrator has your current contact information.
Kinds of contact.
We'll be able to say this from the conversation.
Right, no, this started three years ago or two. What, I had all the information out the truck, no letters. I did not, I was not unreachable, as you guys were informed. I came up when the city economic developer reached out to me. And when I came up within three weeks of receiving that he had quit or she had quit. You had no economic developer. Leslie wasn't put in position by then. And that's when the communication fallout happened. I was never communicated after that, after I brought all the information up.
We're happy that you're here tonight and.
I was here in May. You weren't at the May meeting when I come up. So, yeah, let's, how do we get something set up?
What's weak with Marcy, you have his contact information?
I really think too, I would like to get back to Matthew. I think the city needs help with TIF. That was the North Shore Development. You remember Matthew Alexander?
Yes.
He's a, yeah, that's why I got ahold of him. That's I think we're really. If they're interested now, we might have wasted too much of their time. I don't know. Yeah, I have never heard anything back from him. I pulled some pretty powerful strings to make these connections and it only worked once. I'm trying to help the city.
So we understand that. Yeah, let's.
Let's get some setup.
She's got your contact info.
Beast movement till we have further discussion.
I can't guarantee that as we have a signed contract and our legal house reviewed everything and found that we are in the right to install that water.
Can I get a copies of that?
Work with Marcy and we'll get that out.
That's what I asked. Great care. Mailing your just telephone number, telephone, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, this is still public forum. If any other members of public would like to step forward for public forum, please make your way to the podium and state your name and address and council will hear your concerns. I will ask again if anybody would like to step forward for public forum. And I will ask for a third and final time if anybody would like to step forward for public forum. Hearing none, we will move on to item number five, presentations and correspondence. Tommy Foster has some presentations. Are we starting off with the?
Do you have the map showing a lot of twenty-three? Where the drainage easement was?
Is that in the third document?
Was this, it's a third.
So I have a question, Tom. Or Tommy. Is seven one point one in this that you're presenting now? Two different topics or the same topic?
This what?
Well, we have. On seven point one. That's request for replat.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this different from that?
This is the same.
It is the same. Okay.
Yeah, so there was two other applications that I put in. Or just a couple of. So.
Try to get back.
With the new flat on that, so originally that was that was plotted for two, four units, a twin and a sixplex. And so what we're doing is vacating the all of the common ground around the buildings. Which was all storming drainage easement. And then you can see on the northwest corner, there's there's already two manholes and in the back of the lot between the railroad tracks where the house will go. And that will actually have a regular storm easement and then on the where it says block four on the southeast corner there. Some of that drainage easement runs onto Anthony Samuel's lines. And so that would be a designated drainage easement instead of all of the common ground. And so when I when I bought this from the county, part of the reason for this is when I bought this from the county. All of the land around the current six units that are there. I own everything around that, so I own where their driveways are and everything, so like getting rid of all the drainage easement, I will be can. All of the land around just six unit buildings so he has a correct. Legal description. And then. And we'll do that when we file the plan, so I've already got it, I set up the trough in town. Essentially what we're doing like we would do with any. With any platted individual lot. We have a designated storm easement now in the back of the lot where the storms were currently is instead of just the overlay of everything.
And under our, so under presentations and correspondence, we council cannot take action. If this tie is into seven point one. We continue this conversation at seven point one. Hold it.
I think so.
I mean, we approved the agenda at this point in time to be a little less disjointed.
Yes. Yeah, is there any other info you want to give us here under?
Yeah, so under this five point one, so I. I just did a request to be put on agenda for. Do you look at the map I just gave you, the northwest corner? Then with the new sewer easement that's been drafted. House twenty-two, twenty-one and twenty, those three lots. If we do a patio in the back, we would get approached on that sewer easement. And talking with Josh Schneider and with the attorney, it's kind of common as long as it's just inside the easement, but what we would like to do. Is for those three units. just inside the easement, but what we would like to do is for those three units. And this doesn't have to be decided today, but, um, we guys could talk with legal on it. What I'd like to do is, um, be able to ask for a variance on those three, to be able to put a small patio behind. With that variance, whoever buys those three homes would have a, an agreement that if the city ever did have to access the sewer line and pull up their patio, they would have to replace it at their own expense. You can see where the two manholes are. Neither one of them are going to be close to that, so. I think, uh, I think Josh had a twenty-four foot easement in there, so we're talking about a eight inch storm grain with a, a twelve feet on each side, so. But like we heard, it's actually having a tear up some six foot patio. No, but.
And, and as far as disclosure goes, there'd be a disclosure that would travel with the property.
Yeah, and it would be like a variance from the city is how we'd have to do it when we build the house, we do variance, then the homeowner would understand that if the city is coming in next, we leave that out and put a new sewer line in. Some reason they'd have to repair themselves, but that could be a city.
Okay, all right, um, anything else for?
And the other thing was, was, uh, the other thing I asked for in the gen, um, to be on the agenda was, um, the Fawn Meadows third edition. We did a new set of covenants, revamped covenants for. Kind of have mixed reviews from two different attorneys on it. Uh, one attorney says since the city approved the plat that any new covenants that we draft are legal and whatever. And another one says we should get probably half the signatures of the people that own land out there. For the developed lots, so of the developed lots, there's forty-seven, then we have twenty-four signatures. So I guess we'd probably be fine with that. All I, all I want is just so that there's not a problem later down the road. The current covenants that are in there, half the houses in there don't buy by, and there's sheds out. Without siding on it, there's not two trees in every yard. I don't wanna start a problem. I just wanna, the only change that I have on these covenants is going from a two car to a one car garage. Attached. Otherwise, the covenants are exactly the same.
So you would be responsible for going out and getting these signatures?
I already have.
Oh, you, you have?
So the first attorney said because the city approved the plat, any new covenants would already be.
So we could just, we could just file them. What I, what I don't want is to. The, the second attorney said to get half the signatures of more than the majority. And the only reason I wanna make sure that we do that are is, I don't want somebody to come in later and then we'll yell at the people that are in that subdivision, the new part. So the covenants are for the whole subdivision. It's not for all phases. It's only for this phase. Um, it's for these sixteen months. I just don't want there to be a problem. Ten years down the road, or three years down the road. The current, I think the current covenants expire in three years anyway.
And we're. Taking extra time and extra effort, yeah.
Then above and beyond.
I mean, I don't think it'd be a problem, but if it is. I don't wanna make it so a first time home buyer, and the president will hire a attorney to. So what the ask is there, since the city owns, um, the north part of the property is that the city can sign up as well on the covenants as a landowner in Fawn Meadows. And then if Mr. Samuel would, that would be great, and then, uh, we would have way over majority.
I'm not signing anything.
Yeah, I'd be happy to let you look at it.
Once our process with this, we want to have our legal technique, these covenants, and bring it back to our first November meeting. You need that in a motion form?
No, I can just take directions.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. Now, any other follow up for the five point one item? Perfect, thank you, Tommy. Right, next we will move on to the consent item.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Motion from Gina, do I hear a second?
No, go ahead.
Second from Dan, uh, any other comments or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? All right, uh, now we will come to item number eight point one, technically, a request for action jobs creation fund.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Leslie Satter, uh, economic development coordinator. I'm here with a member from Grokma Valley's Games. Uh, we're here to ask for resolution support for the model five for jobs creation fund for deed. Um, they are planning an expansion project at their site here in Pine City, which will create a dozen jobs over the next three years.
Three years, yeah, three to five years.
Three to five years. Um, they're bringing in a piece of equipment which will make their operations run smoother, more efficiently, more. Uh, they'll be able to get their orders out the door and put her to their customers. Um, and so this whole process started a few months ago, just to kind of give you some background on it, how you get to this point. Um, they reached out, were wondering what resources were available for an expansion project like this. And, um, connected them with our deed representative for this region, and they kind of just walked through what it is, the numbers, the jobs, what the wages are. Um, to determine if they're eligible. So the company is eligible for the job creation fund a deed. And they will receive up to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollar rebate if they meet the, uh, conditions of the grant. Um, so part of the grant application is to get a resolution support from the local unit of government. That's why we're here tonight. Looking for that resolution of support, just certifying that, yep, these jobs will be created. They are, uh, livable, very good paying jobs. Um, they have tour Grokma's facility. They run a really clean operation. They treat their employees well. Um, I think it's, makes sense to support an application like this, and, um, the, the big benefit is that, A, this expansion is happening in Pine City, which is also happening in Minnesota. They have another plant in California that they could have chose, but they chose here. Um, so it's a big deal. And, um, kind of digging around to see how often our businesses qualify for this. It's once every twenty years, it feels like we can apply for stuff like this, so kind of need that they do qualify and it's a good opportunity to partner with those state funds, um, and bring them back into our community.
Is there any legal obligations or anything associated with this grant or anything?
For the city? No, this is a rebate to the business. The resolution of support is just showing the local community support for their expansion project.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty.
Right, I've got a motion from Kyle. Do I hear a second?
All second.
All right, and a second from Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, so we'll proceed with the roll call vote. Uh, Kyle.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Gina.
Yes.
Dan. And I will also vote yes, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you guys in a couple weeks for another request.
Thank you guys for having me.
Thanks for showing up, yeah. Appreciate it.
All right, next up in all business, we have item number seven point one, uh, foster replat utility vacation request.
So with this one, um, council has previously approved the replat of it, and in that it showed the drainage easement, it has to be vacated and brought, and then brought back a life on the new plat. And approving this resolution will do that. This is that the request of the attorney, it just needs to be done on resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash three seven. All second.
All right, I've got a motion from Dan. Second from Kyle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, this is a resolution, so we'll proceed with the roll call vote. I'll start with Dan instead. Gina?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and that was all tied up into one, so next we can move on to item number seven point two. Greg, this is, uh, the L R I P.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So Mindat has a local road improvement program. L R I P, love their acronyms for funding local road projects, a portion of a local road cost. So we have previously submitted Fourth Street Southeast, basically from the fire hall down to Johnson and from Johnson out to Main Street. As our, as a pro, uh, potential candidate for the local road improvement program. Um, this program, about thirty percent of the awards go to, um, counties, thirty percent go to state aid cities, and thirty percent go to small cities. So state aid cities, five thousand or larger. We're not there yet, so we would be, about thirty percent of the grants are targeted for non-state aid cities or counties. Last time we submitted, um, we, we found out we did not get scored, that we did not win, receive it, but we were about the eighth one in line after the funding ones. Roughly fourteen out of a hundred and nineteen projects. So I followed up with the project manager. She gave us some where is to maybe improve our application if the program came around again, which it now has. It, uh, the, the applications are due in December. Just wanted to bring this to the council's attention. If you were interested to, to, um, reapply, we would work with the county. They would need to be the sponsor. We're not state aid, they'll do a resolution. It'd ask us act as the fiscal agent during, if we get awarded the funds. And then we also got letters of support from the technical college and the local politicians in our applications, and we could do all that again. We have time. If the council wants to move ahead. The, the reason that road was picked, it was higher in the CIP, but the, uh, the real target of this project is low, rope, routes of regional significance, and our goal, or our, our story was the technical college and the road and then lack of sidewalk there, people walking, plus all the people driving and commuting to the technical college. And also going all the way up to the fire hall, that being the main route going east, um, out of town. Those were our two components as it being a regional significant project, so.
Can you put more than two? Like, would you put three points?
No, we can put as much.
I'm just thinking with the trail coming in, I agree with that technically being the bicycle connector between.
Yes.
There and downtown, that could bolster regional significance perhaps.
We do have a, a master plan that the council adopted, so that's already in place as well, but that.
Um, is there any? The first thought in my head is like, i- is there any financial or anything required from the city to apply for it again?
Probably a little bit of my time, the, uh, and then the, the maximum amount is about a million and a half, and then the CIP, this project was about four million, so if awarded, million and a half, the city would be on the hook for the rest of the project. And we would have to have it done in twenty-seven or twenty-eight, so it wouldn't be right away next year. We could have done next year, but you have until construction season of twenty-eight to complete the project. You would have time. Around the, the hundred and eleven, we had.
Effectively two budget, two budget seasons.
That calls into our not bonding again for another couple of years.
Where is, uh, where is this, these roads on our, our road project for?
I would say it was probably in the top five or six, and others down the tenth street. It's a little closer. I think there was probably another water main on fourth that's got a history of some water main breaks, and we did patch, we didn't know an overly sixth, right up to fourth. Fourth is definitely in need of some work, and behind rip shop and by the technical college, it's kind of a no man's land with the loading docks and we were, well, part of our application was to put in side block, get a dedicated pedestrian route. Dedicated where the road where the cars should be, try to clean that up better.
Isn't there a problem with the water main going to the tech colleges coming up?
We would include the utilities in this work, but our, this money is only for the road. And the funds that that's where the city portions would come in. We'd, it'd be a full reconstruct with utility.
I guess I'd make a motion that we put in for the grant application again. I'll send it.
All right, I've got a motion from Kyle to proceed with the application, and a second from Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, next up, um, we would have resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one in support of the development of the wastewater treatment pond improvement.
Greg, do you want to speak on that? Okay, this is just something we need in place because we, uh, for the pond we've applied for, and should this become a reality? This shows that we are.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash four one.
All right, I've got a motion from Dan. Do I hear a second?
All second.
Second from Kyle. Any further discussion?
Just the further discussion, I'd just like to say thank you to Marcy and city staff and Greg and everybody who made the tour, the bonding tour go off. It was really well done, it was really well received. I think we represented the city quite well. It was fun, but thank you.
Beautiful day, the ponds didn't smell.
It looked like we were on beachfront and it didn't smell bad, it was great.
Did you plan that step and plan the wind to be going the right way?
All right, I've got a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Being this as a resolution, we will proceed with a roll call vote. Now I can't remember what sign I started with last time. I'll start with you this time, Kyle.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Dan?
I.
And I will also vote yes, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next up, seven point four, request for council action water tower maintenance plan.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Um, been working on this for a while. So, bringing it to council, per the public works committee recommendation to, uh, vote for RFP on a tower maintenance program. Uh, that, I was trying to read exactly how the, how they worded the. The committee recommended going out for RFP on ma- a maintenance plan in its entirety. Um, and then breaking it down into the work, warranty financing, or total package. Um, that's what I'm bringing to council this evening to get approval to move forward on the RFP.
I have a question. If we've known about this since two thousand twenty-four, how come there in the last two budget cycles, there hasn't been any, how come this isn't on a capital plan?
Well, the, the you, you talked about like the work.
The, the expense, yeah, because now the preliminary budget's been approved, and we're being asked to go out five hundred eighty-nine thousand.
The pre, yeah, prelim budget has been approved for the general fund. This is an enterprise.
Out of the water.
This is an enterprise fund.
And the half water fund book that, they can afford to suck six hundred thousand out of there all of a sudden?
I'm not asking to suck six hundred thousand dollars out of it all of a sudden.
That's what the fiscal impact says, five hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's the projected cost of the work, twenty-four to thirty-six months.
So this would be something that we shouldn't budget for, to take out of the water fund?
This would be out of the water fund.
Right, but we went instead of budgeting for a, a repair maintenance?
I'm confused.
Why would we budget for this expense instead of taking it out of the water?
It's a, it's a water expense. It will be out of the water fund entire, entirely.
I just, again, two thousand twenty-four, we just went through, and this is the first ever debate about it. It's, it's a little concerning. Like, if this has been going on for this long, all of a sudden we're asked for an RFP, I don't understand why it hasn't been brought forward. That's just, just me.
The, the council did see the report that one time, that SEH did. So, I don't know that you were on the council at that time.
No, but I was.
All right, any further questions from morning? Would anybody like to make a motion to proceed or otherwise, or?
Yeah, just one question. How many, how many companies?
Yeah, just one question. How many, how many companies actually do this work?
There are actually quite a few.
Is there quite, I mean, do we have a pool to pick from?
Yeah, in fact, I've had conversations with probably half a dozen. Vendors, so.
And is it, would this be a lump sum payment or is this a?
Well, yeah, so the, the program. Kind of manages the projects and finances the projects. So you can budget yearly. Um, on the water fund, so I'm sharing some.
So we'll understand some of that deeper when the R F Ps come in because probably each company does it slightly different. Perhaps, okay. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the city, um, going out for R F P for a water tower maintenance. And warranty and the total package.
All right, I have a motion from Gina. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second from Dave. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, next up, uh.
Sorry?
Uh, seven point six, fire hydrant replacement update.
Oh, um, so yeah, I reached out the day after the meeting. We talked about hydrants, um, at the first meeting. Or the second meeting.
Yeah, it was in September.
September meeting. So um, have a couple of local contractors interested. I did get a, a quote back from one so far. The other is still working on his, so.
And this is to, can you refresh my memory?
This was to replace four hydrants.
Better.
Which we have, we have, um. I think we put this in the budget track for twenty twenty six.
I have a question about that one we were talking about. Fourth street, it just came up. Is that the road that has the hydrants that are too small?
That's one, yeah, that's one of the hitters actually that's on that.
Okay, yes, all right. I knew that.
Well, would, would that be beneficial just to leave that until we find out what the grant?
Possibly.
When do we get the answer about grant though? I don't know. That's my, that's my question.
Oh, smart people.
Could we, could we have the, that one as an alternative on the?
I could just do it or just bid for it and then we just do it.
It'd be cheaper. It'd be cheaper for it to be, I know, but I think it'd be cheaper to do it the other way. If anything we've learned about construction without waiting does not make things cheaper.
I mean, not that I'm trying to spend more money, but I think if we budgeted for it and say we get selected for that street project. Is there another, could you use that money to refer other hydrants or other things with the waters?
Well, yeah, we just stay in.
It's a little capital.
We just stay in.
I like that idea better.
In the waterfront. And that, that hydrant is actually one of the hydrants that's got a hydrant to blow it. I think it's like. It measures like eighty five feet.
Eighty foot, yeah.
Away from it, so.
We added that.
We can always, we can always make that our last one and.
Well, we added that when that other side street was done.
Yeah, when that, yeah, when the water main went into sixty, or hillside.
Right. Perfect. And do we need any action from this or is this just a, this is just an update?
Just an update.
Perfect. Any other comments from council? Thank you, Maureen.
All right, I'll be back.
All right, next, uh, seven point seven, twenty twenty six budget update.
I will. So currently we've uh, made nineteen thousand seven hundred forty dollars in decreases due to things that have come in such as insurances. Dental life, um, our audit, we audited. Did a higher estimate on that. They came with contract lower. Um, we just say, um. I wanted to note that two fifteen has not yet been removed, um, but that should be about another thirteen thousand.
Three fifty.
What did I say?
Two fifteen.
So that, that's still, we've had a bunch of fires this week, so we're still working on this. Um, we're preparing options right now, so we'll get that to council very shortly where we'll have a list of other ideas, thoughts, um, if you have where council can make. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Any follow up from council, questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll move on to seven point eight, uh, committee clarification.
Okay, I was hoping actually to get this done yesterday, but again, the last two days have been. Um, but we did, I think council's looking for, um. More things like the charters, the terms. So we've been, today we were getting more of that information on each, um, person's committees with their term. Um, what else was asked? So, um. That did not get updated on here. We have, we've got notes of the updates we've been making and we get that to council in email tomorrow.
So a couple of things, did the E D A and the H R A, uh, charters or whatever make it to the committee prescriptions?
Yeah, I had to council over reach out about that regarding, it almost was like copied. Ababa? When you were putting the descriptions, were these taken from the, off the website? So. That's where we may want to make some of the wording of this.
Okay, um, I know you have the terms on here for breakdown of committees. Did we ever figure out, um, how many terms individuals have served?
So we've been making phone calls to all the people who are joining this. I think it would turn over. It's just not been updated. Updated, um, information. So yeah, we've been calling people. I think we might have, everybody went to or so, so yeah, getting close, so.
Just on, on page one oh seven for the public works committee position description. It says public works committee position description and then it's a description of the ordinance review.
Yeah, I had noticed that too under the, was under the proposed. No, updated committee position description. So is that what we're seeing?
So is that actually on the website then?
I think it might have just a capital base issue, but.
Don't, don't, most of them say if, if, uh, if we don't have any applications or any, any. Interest in, in someone, that we would maintain that person until we could, because, because we've had, we've had a couple of places I got on the council that. That people say, I have to get off because I've been on too long and. And we're saying, well, there's nobody that wants to be on, so why don't we just let them stay until we find somebody that wants to be on, you know?
The one eleven is the same way. One oh seven and one eleven, both the original and the proposed are public works committee position description. And then the ordinance review committee is the body.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
One of the problems with leaving people off is it, it just seems like they're assumed to be on. There's no real drive to try and get new people. But the other thing is, if there's nobody enough to serve, does the committee actually, is it actually needed if nobody cares enough to serve on it? Um. I also have some concerns about the term limits. I know it mentions three years. It'd be kind of nice if it was every two years, so it fell in line with council and mayorship and got reviewed at the same time. And then set for three consecutive terms to still go to six years.
It's interesting that some are different, like some have a three years, a five, there's.
I should, I could give you a little bit of a history though, is this is a problem about the third stab at this. You know, now to wrap it up and get it complete is always the trick. Um, I think. Will you accept an outside landlord? Not a resident. It's almost a conflict in that or something.
Depends on the committee.
Yeah.
For you have time or you have not.
Um. But I think one thing we could, you know, terms and all that are a little more concrete, but clear up our priorities to what are we looking for? What, what kind of information and what, you know, what's the role? Because nobody wants to go and waste their time for an hour or two if it doesn't really have any significance. So clear up our priorities and then we can build that trust and maybe be a little more functional.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, the, the only other thing, I know terms are. Kind of set in stone, but if we're talking about trying to get more people involved, is a five year commitment a long time? Or a three year commitment, a long time for people? Would a shorter term bring in more people?
Right.
And allow them to have a, you know, kind of turnover thing.
Cause I can remember I was serving on planning commission and H R A the last time. Terms were, this was rewritten.
Yeah.
Um. And it was, cause I, and I saw the issue at the time. It was, there was probably, there was a handful of people that were on. Two, three or four committees, well, then your committees aren't really a true representation of the full community, so, um.
Then I also think we could strive for having some with a little history and some brand new, you know, always. Uh, um, I remember, this was years ago, I worked at the school. They always had a, they, they always had to sprinkle new people in because new ideas and. And, you know, new energy and whatnot, but it was always good to have a couple anchors that kind of went around and knew how things would go. So finding that balance is important too.
One committee member who I was calling to get their terms, he explained that they had changed where you could only serve on one. Yeah, yeah, too. So they were grandfather clause in, which I was always wondering how did this happen? So their grandfather clause is, now council needs to, um, think about, do we, because that person's willing to step down from one if council wants that.
Is there a clause that actually says that their grandfather did that or?
Definitely.
Or is it just the assumption that since they've been doing it since before it's implemented?
Yeah, I think it was that council. I don't even know if it's, I can see if it's in the minutes, but it was. No, a previous mayor's decision to let that be grandfather clause. So, um.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
I, I think, and this is just my opinion, but. I think council has dropped the ball on committees. Uh, I think that part of the reason we don't have participation, and this is what I've heard from some community members, is that. We used to have really strong, solid participation. Um, and many of the ideas or thoughts that came out of committee. Do not go any farther than committee. Um, so people were kind of turned off by it. And to be honest, even before I was elected and now since I've been elected. What have we as a council or what did the previous council do to manage committees? Committees are our direct responsibility. Um. Uh, I think we need to do a better job of driving the committee bus. Um, do we need to look at opening up the mix of people that live in town versus out of town for committees? Do we need to look at doing more, um, in-depth interviews with candidates rather than just putting on a consent item agenda? Invest some council time into it to make it run. Because I feel, and again, that's just my opinion, I feel that a lot of times we try, I do try to lean on department heads and city staff when this is our responsibility. Yeah, I, I guess in my opinion, I'm, I'm getting nervous about the committees because it seems like. Different committees are starting to operate as their own little councils or they're assuming. That they have authority that I don't know that they have and it's just being. Either granted or assumed, it'd be nice if clear direction was given to them. And they had their clear advice back to the council where we had a clear decision made on that. But with that, some committees meet monthly, some meet bi-monthly and some meet quarterly. And so if you set something on the agenda, the other committees make a recommendation that the council proves that has to be commu- communicated back to the other committees. So that they either stop working on it or. They're just going to assume that they're supposed to be working on those projects under council direction. And then to override them is not fair when that's what the council set for expectation. So the, the council has to be doing a better job of what's still on those agendas and what's being removed because there's obviously a certain item that keeps coming up and up and up. But the council has to be clear direction on that and I think that's got to be straight across the board. And some committees, I, again, just my opinion, I, or some committees that meeting on a quarterly basis makes sense. Some committees that have to meet once a month, some that can meet every two months, um.
Committee, bring your hand out here.
Yes. Oh, or like ordinance committee, I'll use for an example right now, committees and commissions are supposed to serve in an advisory role for council and. Right now at ordinance, we have two citizens and two counselors. There's supposed to be seven citizens and two counselors. So it becomes less of an ability to be, uh, an advisory and more of a, oh, gotta figure this out so we can get all this work. Or, or come up with the opinion or whatever, but report.
All right, how do we move forward from here, other than collecting the rest of that information? Do we?
Something we'd like to see just brought back.
See it's brought back and then maybe.
This is work session worthy, in my opinion. I think this is work session worthy just because. From the sounds of what staff is going through, what some of our committee members have gone through, the information that we have, like. It sounds like we have one leg on a four leg stool and we got to rebuild the stool.
Yes, because I can say like, I remember when I first was appointed to planning. In twenty fourteen-ish, I, when I started, I had a great conversation with mayor at that time. When I started, I was giving up three inch, three ring binder full of. Uh, documentation of L M C, documentation on what, what it means to be on the planning commission, what are our roles and responsibilities.
What they've been working on previously, what's coming up that I'll keep.
Yeah. So if we can kind of move.
Yeah, that's good.
Move forward with that.
I have another thought too before.
I hope you did that.
My train of thought, but I know one of the committees, I think was Parks and Rec, was able to set their own special committee meetings. I'm wondering if that should be set by council, not by the actual committee. I don't know if that was removed or if it's, if that's in other committees. That they can set their own committees.
And Parks and Rec is, um, when, with Public Works, by stand alone, um, only been its own. Own, um, had its own leader for what? Five years, six?
I'd say six.
Ten or three. Yeah.
Stays, yeah.
I think it, it, it's interesting and I don't want to say that it can't happen. I think the council should set it just because. We are supposed to find ways to pay for the special meetings. It does cost resources, whether it's staff time, our time, public time, resources building. I think sometimes we forget that there is a cost of things and I want to make sure that we're not forgetting about everybody else's time, including staff time to. Set up a bunch of meetings because we feel really good about special meetings. So.
Well, attach a work session before a regularly scheduled meeting. Or block out part of a regular meeting for a work session. I, I don't, it's for me, I'm, I'm going to get fixed in one meeting.
Yeah, and we also used to have a call session where we set our goals. Not believable.
Well, I think, I think there's a lot of blame to be corralled for everybody. What, what I seen as, as, you know, as the fire marshal and sitting in. City hall and watching all these committees come and go and, and different things going on. There was just, we, we didn't have a steady administration. We didn't. There was just a lot of changes, too many changes. And I think some of the people that were on these committees just got fed up. Said that's enough. So I, I think we, I think we've seen the stability come back quite a bit and, uh. I think it'll be easier, but I like the idea of just, you know, somebody having something to hand them to say, this is what the committee does. Because otherwise, okay, I want to be a next week. What do you do? Well, you go to a meeting, you know?
There was a former counselor that wrote that up over a year ago and it went absolutely through and are sitting down in the same competition. Not disagree. It needs to be done.
Yeah.
Action steps.
Um, do we want to set aside a totally separate meeting time? Do we want to do it during our?
Marcy will bring it back to us.
Bring it back when you can have a, a late agenda on the next month.
I think the budget's one point.
Yeah.
I. Can you just possibly look at the whole public works and ordinance, uh, update?
Yes.
If that is on, online.
Perfect. All right, any other follow ups on, uh, committee clarification? Hearing none, we'll move on to seven point nine, uh, Bon Meadows Capitol Improvement. Hearing none, we'll move on to seven point nine, uh, Fawn Meadows Capital Improvement Plan, continued discussion.
Council requested this just kind of stay on, um, any kind of discussion?
I don't believe we've heard.
We had, at the last meeting, we had, council had decided to place it onto our capital improvement plan. For twenty twenty-six and zero, but also just to have it on there, and then moving forward when we budget next year, we can. Attach a dollar on, but for next year, it's on without it on.
I don't wanna get too far off in the weeds here, but. Capital Improvement Plan leading into Fawn Meadows, into the Horvus property, housing units and availability. I think we may behoove ourselves to have a conversation about how Fawn Meadows is owned and how old this property is owned. Um, seeing as how it was built, it was the way and type of houses that are being built, don't. Follow that, that style anymore, there's not a lot of simple family homes that would be built, so. Can we get out of a residential S F R, out of zoning and into some more? Yeah, well, just different density stuff, can we do light, light retail on the bottom with the three to four mixed use on top?
I think that's a great conversation for planning to have, um, kind of flesh out. I'm open, anytime, just in a hole, please, we have your, all your, all your input.
Let's bring it up because, again. If, if we want planning to do that, then we should direct planning to do more, and if there's no. If there's no appetite at the council level for that to happen, then it would be a waste of.
I agree that we should look at and see, make sure that one more, ready and developed, that were, I'm gonna use the word nimble and able to do. Whatever makes sense to do for the community at that point in time.
Back to May, once we talked about. We were supposed to get back on the agenda, but it didn't. I just kinda kept, you know, watched the agenda all July. I'm not opposed to. Benefit the city. Region. We all know now too. So I guess as long as we're talking about the capital improvement plan and for improvement, I would make the motion that we direct. Planning to look at the zone and Fawn Meadows for capital improvement. And provide recommendations.
Second, that pile.
All right, I've got a motion from Kyle, a second from Gina, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, next we will move on to new business, item number.
So, committee updates.
Oh, I have Dave's eight point one is the partial payment, it's on assessment. And the trucker.
What do you wanna do first?
Let's do the eight point, let's call eight point one, the partial payments on assessment.
Okay, I, I gotta call up your constituent that wanted to, uh, with the, the twenty twenty-four street reconstruction. Wanted to make a partial payment and was told that they couldn't do that, now I understand that, because I went through it in two thousand nine. Myself, and uh, there was talk at that time, and I know when you look at the, the, the. All the paperwork that you, you get, it, it says you have two options, you can either pay it. The assessment comes, or you can take it, do a payment. What I, why I put this, why I wanted to put on there, can we open up your discussion? Or send it somewhere uh, to whether it's ordinance or wherever it goes, for suggestions to change that. So that allows people, because why wouldn't we want, if somebody wanted to pay five thousand out of ten thousand, why would we take that money? Why would we want to wait, I mean, and what are the advantages of waiting or not waiting? I guess that's kind of where I'm at with that, that's why I brought it up.
That's a great idea for staff to dive into and make sure it's, first of all, make sure it's legal and.
Yeah, right.
Um, if it is, I guess I would have assumed that that's how you could pay for your assessments, without ever having an assessment on my property, I would assume that. If I can't afford to give you fifteen thousand dollars right upfront, but I can give you five, that's gonna cut.
In ordinance that way, so, change everything, well, first we can dive into finding out if the county's making that rule, otherwise we can. Free, free. And in order for it to be partial, we have to pass it for the.
Well, that doesn't sound very tough. To ask a question, does it, would that have anything, would that affect bonding math at all, and interest rates and, like. I mean, cause I'm guessing the way that they do bonding is, if you do, you pay off, you're out, but if you're in, you're calculated, so.
Yeah.
I'm curious, yeah.
I don't, I don't, why would they change the bonding, yeah, cause if, if, the bonding's gonna be way before anybody decides to pay anything, because they don't even know what they're gonna. Charge, so.
It's all, it's, so I, I like the idea, but it sounds like we're operating not, not enough information.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I brought it up.
Did, did we ever decide if we were taking actions or just discussions, kids?
Well, Gina's question was to me, with, you know, what, if we were, I don't know if we were taking action, I mean, I, I just thought discussion was important and start and then. Go from there, you know, either have staff look into it, come back to us, put it back on the agenda under old business tax month with. Your findings, and then we could possibly take action with recommendations and staff support.
So I, I like the idea of table in it, I just didn't know if the, if the staff needed an official action by the council to look at. What are the full implications of partial payments, or if it could just be direction just because it's. Little bit different, I guess.
Might just take the direction, bring it back next month, probably find out and uncover. And perhaps if it works out, perhaps have a mock, or, you know, what the ordinance could look like. And um, we can go from there, if that's what we choose.
Perfect, any other comments on that? All right, hearing none, we will move on to eight point two, uh, Public Works, uh, Baxter Truck appears.
Is there any questions though, I know it's a girl's number, but.
Is that truck that had a little?
Two thousand and seven.
When did we buy it?
That, that seems like.
Seventeen, I think it was ten years old.
Okay, because I'm like, I remember, I feel like I was on council.
You didn't get a warranty.
I just remember how excited we all were when you were.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like your eight jewel.
Cause if you gotta hire.
Yeah. And right now, that's where we're sitting, so, I have somebody on, on the hook if we have an emergency to. Come in, so.
And how soon would this get done?
Uh, if you approve it, I will call you tomorrow, there's two pumps sitting in all Illinois, and hopefully we'll have your name on one. Um, I'm not sure on McQueen's timeframe on the repair. And dive into all that, hopefully it's.
Are we sitting on the sewer pond?
Yeah.
Uh, we're. Even though I have it coded to the vehicle, we'll be going over in that line, but we do have. Um, eighty thousand year worked in equipment and machinery, so. It'll be all right. It's a. Baxter. Looks the, it's the water pump in the. No, for the jet, for the rotor, yeah. So it's a, it's kind of the heart of the machine.
Yeah, I wonder if it's the same.
A big piston pump is what it is.
I got like ten of those, you can have one. Brand new, has work.
Do you have a picture of them? Well, I'm pretty sure, oh yeah, I'm pretty sure they're kind of a special thing, piece of equipment, but.
You're looking at me, stopping. Say yes.
Question.
Well, this, this one's right on the truck.
Okay.
I'd really like that idea, but if we're gonna go that way, I just wanna make sure that we're all covered legally, everything else.
I mean, if you're gonna donate it to the city, donate it, we'll, we'll use it somehow. So yeah, yes to the pump, and yes to this pump too, please.
Um, I guess my only question is, um. Is this, uh, does this dollar amount trigger the need for multiple quotes, or is this a pre-existing vendor, so it there?
It's, and there is, they're the only vendor.
Okay.
Like I said, make the motion that we go ahead and approve this expenditure and then explore other options.
All right, any further discussion from council? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Can I do eight point three? Let's do a trip, Tommy Foster's donation. No, it's mounted, it's like hard mounted into the truck.
I'm excited to check it out.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, next we will move on to committee updates, um. Ordinance review, I wasn't at ordinance last this month, Dan, you have to take that one.
Uh, we discussed some ongoing things, um. Around parking and parking lot design requirements, um, it's been. Off the radar for a few months, but back on, um, essentially looking at how the, the code reads now. For required amount of parking spaces, kind of planning and ordinance are working on this sort of simultaneously. Uh, and then design, design requirements for parking spaces right now are, are rather archaic, is there a way that we can? Shrink to new state standards of eight and a half feet wide or standard great spots? There's some ADA parking issues, um, with our central business district that we have to resolve. Um, and just trying to come up with good ways to do that, um, and we talked about variance, uh, and appeals ordinance. Uh, we didn't get very far into that one. I'll be back on it. Uh, we discussed starting this other work group again. I don't remember how that. I just remember my opinion on the zoning work group, but I just not. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, it was, once upon a time, it was something that. It started from parking zoning and then turned into an entirety of a zoning work group, and we just, we've never been able to attract two from each committee that we need. And are we gonna be a part of it, or are we not gonna be a part of it? It just, it didn't sound like there was a lot of interest in continuing to work with this. Version of his own work group, not to any way that zoning and code still needs to be going through, but how do we? How do we eat the elephant one bite at a time, and who's gonna eat the bites in the right order?
One question I have, you said ordinance and planning are kind of working on this together.
The parking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, so that's the part I have a question is, is now we have committees that are. Are we giving, do we have committees giving orders to other committees and working back and forth with all?
This is, was all council directed over a year.
For the two committees to work simultaneously on this?
For ordinance to work on the ordinance piece and planning to look at the, um. Zone, how it works and zoning.
Okay, but everything's going back to council, or two committees aren't?
No.
Coming back for?
No.
Okay.
No, ordinance is working on the ordinance piece and planning is looking at. How does it fit with the zoning piece, if we were to do away with parking regulations at the, at the planning commission level? What do we do instead, you know, we talked about side of street parking in the winter, um, you know. That's more what planning is looking at, ordinance is looking at.
Perfect, all right, uh, anything else for ordinance?
I don't believe, assessment policy is still on there, we still discuss that, that's still in our future topics, we've got other examples, so.
All right, next would be Parks and Public Spaces Board.
Um, Parks and Public Spaces had the grand opening of the, grand reopening of the Lions Park, um, there were. A handful of kids there, they enjoyed talking right next to our meeting, it was kind of fun, and then homeboy really liked free candy. Went, shot with enough candy in there, but that was great, and it was great, I said, why are these kids playing at the park? But, uh.
Free candy.
No, it was, it was lovely, and then, um, we had lake access on our agenda, and we beat that up. Um, pretty well, we decided in the future, we're gonna have, if, when we discuss lake access, we're gonna discuss summer access, and we're gonna discuss winter access. We're not gonna try to discuss them together, because I think one thing we learned for sure is maybe those. May need to be in two different spots or approached with two different, um, set of priorities in mind, we didn't make any decisions, we're just gonna. You know, moving forward, we're gonna discuss it as two separate issues, and then, uh, Nate Johnson with the, uh. Disc golf course, he is getting so close to being able to present us with a memorandum of understanding. He has eighteen golf, um, not holes, but baskets. Um, and he had a catchy little phrase that the, the first nine holes were easier, and it was the, I can't remember. Mild, oh yeah, mild, and then the other ones wild, thanks, right, so, um, that was fun, he's just really put a lot of work into that, and the committees just. Really, um, excited for that to come for the board, so you can see what's happening.
He reached out to me about some questions about signs that I went and was able to meet with Tabitha today to get him some answers, so he can continue the sign part on.
Yeah, I think directional signs are gonna be a, no problem, but, yeah.
Just put them in the M O U so it lives with the course and not with, yeah.
He's just, and he, he's just, um, you know, been utilizing information he's learned from other communities that have done this to. Disc golf, so mild and wild is, uh, getting ready to, well, come to the council and see what we think of his idea.
Super excited, I did not realize the economic impact that goes with this golf course. People travel all over the place to play disco, because it's low cost, no cost family thing, it's. Really excited, I hope we can do something with it.
I remember when the one in Boyer Park opened, not to get us super into the weeds here, there, when that one opened, and it's a fairly small. Disc golf course for my understanding, but it was, the fanfare was.
Yeah.
Regional to come and play disc golf at that, that location, so that's fantastic. Um, any other follow-up for Parks and Public Spaces Board? Perfect, uh, let me move on to ten point one from the mayor's report. Uh, I'm very excited and happy to announce that on Friday, we officially closed on the three fifteen building. The city of China City is no longer.
I can confirm that as of today, all utilities were transferred back to the closing date as well, so that.
Awesome, thank you everyone for your hard work and moving this project along, kicking it across the finish line.
Can I add one small question, do we think it might be a good idea to put out on our website that the city no longer owns? That, that's so it's no longer considered a public parking, parking lot?
Yes, I think that's a very good idea.
Right, uh, ten point two, I know, uh, a little bit more on the Lions Park reopening, I made it there just after the ribbon cutting. Uh, I was a few minutes late because I was single parenting it that day, but, um. No, it was great, Olivia and I stopped by and spent some time at Parks and Rec meeting and, uh. Talked about lake access for a little while, and we got to hang out at the park, and it was a fantastic experience. Um, and then ten point three, the sewer pond visit, uh, we had the representatives here last week. Um, break showing, I think they were very impressed by everything, I, it was my actual first time. Standing on the bank of the sewer ponds, and you can look at them on beacon, you can look at them on Google Earth, but until you're standing up there. you can look at them on beacon, you can look at them on Google Earth, but until you're standing up there, you don't realize how big those things are and how much land they take up, but, um, very positive feedback from the folks that I talked to. And we wait with bated breath to see, uh.
Yeah.
How it goes from there.
Yeah, some of the things that some of the representatives said too, like this could be a model if other areas had this much land, this is such a, uh, more economical way and eco-friendly way to treat water, not do all the concrete. That was, was really cool.
All right, perfect, that's all I can ask. Um, in the other, oh, closed session, it's not a closed session.
Well, thank you, um. So we had been, I think you all are aware that, uh, Parks and Public Buildings is kind of scattered throughout the system. Um, we had been looking at the possibility of a building that, um, we've been talking with them, however, I think in the long run, it's just gonna be too much money to invest in something we can use. Um, so however, saying that, I would like maybe some council direction, uh, looking at the possibility of a building being put at, um, ballpark and it's like, what type of building is that called again? Is that a pole? I don't know, full shed, and just giving us the, um, direction to look at what that would cost, what would that look like, time to build it? Um, but it would be something at the ball field that would contain all of Parks and Rec's equipment, um, truck and almost give him like a little workshop too, to do all this stuff, because he does so much stuff for the, um, the city, painting and.
How, how big of a building are you talking about?
Forty by eighty? That's not one of them.
Two hundred square. Why the ball field, just curious, I mean, uh.
Someone in. Um, is there any utilities over there?
I think there's water, sewer.
With all electric or gas?
Um, not sure where it's.
But this came up.
There's not gas. There's water, it's good.
What part of the ball?
Northwestern.
Of the, of the parking lot? Where are we gonna park all the cars when there's baseballs?
I'd ask him. I have a question for you, just.
Yeah, I, I'm part of the baseball association, I know, when that thing is full, it's full, and the parking lot's full, the road's full, people park across.
Hi, could you, um, reiterate to me, because to your point, you're, I know your things were in the, the big doors at three fifteen main? And then where else did you have? No, no, before, like before we moved out.
Oh.
Some stuff in the coal storage.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a visual of what you need and, and, you know.
So I have two questions to locations, um, Public Works is right next to the old, what rifle range or whatever they call that, we own that property, double ready, never been developed. Could we do something there and put it on the same meter as Public Works with the same utilities? Or we have something smaller and can we do something right next to the library, a fire hall where we can put everything on the same meter and the same utilities? The, the only thing, piggybacking on your comments, Kyle, the only thing that concerns me is especially with a thirty two hundred square foot building, I think it would be nice to have, especially when your parking mowers and all of our equipment there, and it's to have security. So I think making, if it could be closer to fire hall, Public Works, some one other city building that we could tap into our fiber, tap into our network and that would make monitoring it much easier. Uh, I would say it doesn't necessarily need to be the end all be all, but I think it would be a big positive if that was a possibility.
I, I feel like years ago too, like they had the, the main storage here at three fifteen main, but then the lawn mowers they used up at the ball fields, they had the ball fields and the ones at Hilltop, they had in that sheds, I don't, I just don't understand exactly, and then you do painting. Is that in the summer? I, I just, it seems like a big, a big space, like it seems more than, um, we can just think about that right now, Mike.
Would be nice.
Okay. She have it loaded down with tools.
You said forty by eighty?
This might not be a popular comment. Did scale some buildings, I did see the Public Works building, it's twenty three thousand square feet. So, um, you know. Um, it's a lot of space. It's more than MinDOT has by three times, so, um, that's a big building as well.
Well, I know there was a strong community push and strong community support not that long ago that built a community center.
We still working on that, yeah.
They wanted to.
What's in that little roll, roll top garage up at Hilltop right now?
Then Milwaukee still.
Snowmowers are in there?
So I know back in the day, they tore down old fire hall, where did all those fire trucks get stationed at that time?
Probably were.
And how was that space wise? I'm guessing there was probably a lot more fire trucks than there were Parks and Rec.
We had a, we were cramped.
I mean, but we made it work. Marcy kind of bring up an interesting point, uh, housing everything.
We, I, we spent Friday in the Public Works Bay Area, is that what you call it? I just know, things are just really spaced out. Like we were able to sit at the table and still had a lot of space and a lot of space. I'm just.
Well, where, where you were sitting now, there's usually pickups.
There, there's a safety aspect, aspect to that too, because, uh, you're, you're moving a big equipment around in these, these places, you really.
Right.
The more room, the better. That's, when that building was built, there was a lot of controversy, you know, a lot of people thinking that was just too much. But I'll tell you what, we got an echo building for a good price and it, um.
It's a really nice building.
It is, and, and, uh, I appreciate the, the maintenance that was done, Public Works asked and it got done and, and that was appreciated. We need to maintain our properties when we have, so I, I know the other building that you're talking about. I, I don't know what you're talking about, Brock. I don't think would be any cheaper than what's that, what's sitting over there. I really don't.
So we're looking forward, um, just to accrue open the council to let us just start digging it up and looking into other options.
So I'm not really on board with the whole ball field thing. I kind of like having it around the footprint of Public Works, if we ever want to expand Public Works or have it all expanded defense or anything, uh, I'm not opposed to looking at other options, but I am kind of opposed to the, to the ball field. So.
I'm not really loving the ball fields either.
Yeah, I don't, if, if that, if everybody else was in favor but thought it was a great idea, that's why I was gonna be like, yeah, sure, but if even everybody else is kind of on the same page, I think explore your options, I think, I, I would be my personal opinion, one of five, just explore your options, get some quotes, kind of run the numbers.
Some ideas presented to council, okay?
Don't go.
I'm curious what you need, like I just, I'd like to see what you need and why you need it before we spend the money.
Yeah, I kind of want to see all the equipment lined up, but.
Yeah.
Have a visual, I guess, is it, does it seem big?
Isn't there room?
Because I think, like, it makes sense to keep your mowers closer to where you're gonna use them and smaller things, but having your central, you know, like you said, where you can paint things and fix things and do all those things, but, but still be able to easily access and do your job on some of these other sites, so it might be more than one little building or something.
What about the footprint of the new cemetery? Isn't there a lamp left there? Where the, where the new cemetery is or not? Well, it's not any further than the ball fields.
No, you're talking about up at Hill?
Hilltop.
Yeah, Hilltop.
Hey, I do get nervous about having one up, I, I understand having specific departments, but if we can look at having buildings that everybody can use, if you have a workshop where everybody can use it, it makes it a little easier in my mind for taxpayer dollars. I don't think we're at the size like St. Paul where you have different departments and different buildings for each of those. I know even in St. Paul, you have Parks and Rec and, uh, Public Works are both the other, uh. We're getting into a lot of buildings.
Well, I, what bothers me a lot when I've seen it over the years is we're driving these lawnmowers and awful long ways a lot of times and because they don't have trailers and pickups to pull. So either we buy trailers and pickups so that our people can haul them from one spot to the next or we figure out how we gotta centrally locate it and putting on one or the other is not gonna be the answer either, I agree. I agree, it would be more efficient to have one shop, but just, uh, I think that's part of the problem, so we, we, we're spread out, but.
Cause one of the lawn mowers is at Ball Field already, right? Okay. And then we had, we had one or two at the, um, box, by Firehawk.
Yeah.
And.
Last one, we're over there.
What part of the cemetery is Public Works do?
Cemetery mower is with Public Works, yeah. So they have, is that mower at your building right now?
There it is.
Oh, in the, okay.
You kind of like the trailer option, especially if you're gonna start talking about an annexation and expansion of the city. Unless you're gonna find out and put a little satellite jumper for all your, your lawnmowers everywhere, but.
But who's driving the trucks and the trailers? Cause our seasonal staff, if we're having as much problem as we are with getting them to take direction, be able to do things, we're gonna trust them to back up trucks and trailers? I don't. That's just me.
I think, yeah, I think, uh, I said, a trailer is a lot less expensive than a forty by eighty shop, but that being said, I, I want what's gonna work best for everybody and I want what's gonna work best for the taxpayers, so.
Wheel bearings on lawnmowers are cheap.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, right, how was somebody else's motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion by Kyle, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Gina, any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
It's too early. We have to stay here.